The meeting back to order. We'll resume with item H3.
Let me, if I may, begin by saying that although Mr. CAO wanted this to be on the agenda, I didn't feel the need, and I will state now, that there was no amount of accepting or rejecting that by this board that changed the proposition that I am no longer your district attorney. So with that caveat, the county's only agenda.
It's a formality. Okay. Before the board takes action, is there any public comment on this item?
He's always posting for the agency. I need one of the classics.
Thank you.
Is that the one you want?
Is that the one you want?
That's the one you're giving.
So it is.
Mr. Chairman, let me accept the resignation.
Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Burns for his service of the day from the county. I greatly appreciate it. Before we take the vote, Bob, also let's say, it's a thankless job, you know, the DA, and you've served them well for a long, long time. Good luck in the future here, and it's been nice, you know, getting to know you, and look forward to the next six and a half months working with you.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
Did they have any time to hear a pin about?
So, before we spend the control of your own vote. All righty, so we have a motion and second to accept resignation. Hold and say aye.
Aye.
All ready. Item H4.
And again, Mr. Chairman, that was an item that I asked to be placed on today's agenda because I knew that I was going to be resigning shortly, or had already at the time that we had the agenda meeting. And so then the matter falls to you as a Board of Supervisors to fill the vacancy created by my resignation. And you have different choices. You can, as I outlined in my correspondence to you, you can appoint Victor of the 2014 June primary, you can take no action, or you can provide direction to staff. There is one option, logical option, I left off there, and it didn't occur to me, well, you could appoint someone else. You could appoint another qualified person, assuming they were prepared to accept. But those are your options. Certainly I've expressed-
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we had already determined going into the election cycle that when Mr. Burns was hired to be the county council, I think the board determined that whoever the winner was of the June primary would be given, and that historically has been done, that's how Mr. Burns became district attorney originally, he won the election and then got appointed. So I would move that we appoint the winner of the 2000 book, his primary election for district attorney states in December to fill the balance of the term, she can count, be all warded up, ready to serve a new term in January. So, I know she's willing to accept it because she's sitting in the audience, waiting to go.
And under discussion, yeah, good luck, congratulations. I'm confident he'll do a fine job.
She's definitely nicer looking than the actual-
But I can't promise I won't be a pain in your butts.
Still need a campaign speech or an acceptance speech.
Before she's invited to make any comments, I'll report to you that I pledged Ms. Montgomery any support that she needs from myself, or any effort I can make to help her in her transition. It is a daunting task, it is a challenging position, and it is mostly thankless at times. And I think the county, change is good, and so I look forward to the new energy that Ms. Montgomery can bring to the office, and I'll just speak for myself. I wish her all the success in the work.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Okay. Before we take the vote, quickly, there's been a couple, Eileen Spencer-
I'm just curious, does anybody know if Stacy's the first woman district attorney?
She's the second woman.
Second?
Paula Tennant served as the district attorney back in the, late 50s, early 60s. It's been 50 years.
A year and a half.
Sheriff Crowden?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple things. One, on H3, I'd like to thank Bob for his partnership over the years. Actually, we started with the county about the same time I was a correctional officer in the jail, he was a deputy public, or I'm sorry, deputy-
Oh, careful there, fellow.
Public defender? No offense.
That's all we really are anyways, is defenders of the public.
But, you know, we all have, we have a tough job in criminal justice, and we all have an important role, and sometimes we're not going to agree all the time, but the good, but we have to be able to talk to each other when we have a disagreement, come to terms, and respect, you know, the role that we each serve. And Bob's been a good partner in that regard, and I want to wish him luck in his new adventures. And I'd like to, you haven't appointed her yet, but obviously I look forward to working with Stacy Montgomery. You know, that's an important relationship between the sheriff and the DA, and the other partners. But especially now, it's a real critical time in our, in our line of work, and it's important that we're able to work together, face the challenges as a team of sorts, and I look forward to working with her. She's got a great attitude, is going to bring, you know, some energy in there, and hopefully we can make some real progress in the issues we're facing in our communities, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All righty. We'll go ahead and vote, the move and second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Stacy.
Address the board. Thank you. Actually, I would just like to say thank you to those who are in the public. Thank you, thank you for this opportunity, and I want to thank you for the appointment today. Thank you, Mr. Burns, for the job that you've done.
I'm sorry, frontal shots better than a profile. Sorry. Yeah, better than a profile. There you go. Sorry.
Is this part of the bill for you?
A frontal wisp.
I apologize.
That looks very funny, you bending over. Thank you. Thank you for your confidence in me. Thank you, Dean. I appreciate your comments and your confidence in me, and I really look forward to serving Lassen County in this capacity, and I really look forward to a wonderful working relationship with all of you. Again, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Well, from that, we're going to go to some boring stuff. H5, morning.
Thank you, Larry. Here we are, and he's up for you, a proposal to, a proposal to amend and extend a contract with Willdan Engineering to provide building services for Lassen County, planning and building services. We enjoyed a really good relationship with Willdan over the last couple of years, they really came in and saved the day for us. As a side note, we're working hard to train up our new building official and our inspector, they both have enjoyed certifications lately, and we're getting a lot more, a lot further down the road in terms of being able to do things in-house, but we will always have a relationship with some outside firm to do the more technical and advanced plan checks. Willdan Engineering has done an excellent job, like I say, so I recommend that you submit a contract.
Very good. The move and second.
Thank you.
Full of words.
Question? It's almost out.
You say here in the top paragraph that Willdan will pay 60% of the plan check fees.
That's correct.
So the 40% remaining, does that cover your cost?
No, not at all. I mean, even at 100%, if we were doing everything in-house, the fees are currently low enough that they wouldn't be 100% recovery. And that's a discussion that we can have at future date about what kind of recovery you want back from building, from planning, from all those projects. But generally speaking, you know, community development departments throughout the state are not 100% recovery, they're somewhere in the middle, usually about 50%.
And what are you?
In building, we're probably a lot better than planning. Planning fees get probably 20 years old, or older, but I think building was last reviewed in 2005, so it's not as updated. But, you know, there's a corresponding relationship to what expertise you have in-house to be able to do plan checks and, you know, be able to understand the project and the engineering. And so the more, you know, if you go to Sacramento County, they'll have an engineer on staff, that's, everything's in-house, but they're paying for that position, of course. So, in jurisdictions that are smaller, you just don't have that expertise generally, although I would remark that our building official, who is now our permanent building official, is a certified building official, working on plan check examining, and we will be hopefully incurring, or we will be encouraging our inspector to do the same, so that we can have as much in-house expertise as possible, so that, you know, down the road, you know, only the more technical and advanced projects need to go out and be seen by a consultant.
My other question for you is, you know, if you looked, rather than project, you looked at some other counties to trade your-
Oh, we've been working with Plymouth County for the last two years. Plymouth County and Willdan Engineering have both played a role. In fact, two years ago, it was primarily Plymouth County, although they really just didn't have the personnel and the time to just continue on helping Lassen County when we were missing the expertise and didn't have anybody else to do it, and we're just in this situation. But Plymouth County came to the rescue, and we still have a working relationship with them.
Some decision you have to go across from your Jenny, you know, overseas are very capable, maybe you can farm her up to their, I mean, kind of do like a trade swap, something that'll offset some of her-
Our, actually, our building staff meets with Plymouth County building staff once a month.
And we still retain, like, 40% of the, of the plan check fee.
That's right. And it's not every item doesn't go to Willdan. You know, if it's something that's a, you know, real simple and basic kind of construction plan, it doesn't require engineering, we'll just do it in-house. Those are less common.
Do you have any other questions? Any questions of the public? All righty, then we'll go ahead and vote. We have a motion and second, so all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thanks. All righty. Move on to H6, animal control.
Good morning, Larry Malara, Public Works Director. Item here is a kind of a discussion item. I just wanted to kind of give a little update, and questions are- Basically, in our current fiscal year budget, 1314, we had some funding set aside under the animal control budget. We had $7,500 to paint and seal the existing kennel floors and walls. That one, we did not defend this fiscal year, will not, so that will be carried over into our request for next fiscal year. We had another $5,000 to upgrade the old portion of the shelter. That one, we did, some work on it, we still have more work to go, so the proposed budget, we're asking for $10,000. That is some money for some engineering, to complete some plans, so we can get through plan check, and then some money for its maintenance and some little more, basically work that our existing crew will be doing to upgrade the shelter. Then the third item in our current budget was some money for some corral panels, and that we did purchase out of this term here. So, basically, the work is getting moved on to the next fiscal year. In addition, we are asking under the 150 fund for $40,000 for remodel. And this is kind of, I think you heard last week, I think Spencer had some plans completed, this $40,000 basically will move towards that idea of remodeling the old shelter. So that's kind of where we are as far as budget and what we have moved forward to next fiscal year. Ask any questions? Have we been planned, Pete, or?
No, I think they were in there last time Spencer had-
What did she say? Yeah, basically, the, Pete's here to help answer too, but basically, the, oh, thank you. The plans are for the old, old shelter part, which we'd like to remodel for-
Larry, before we go, supervisor, I have a-
I have a question on the plan. I was under the assumption, Mrs. Spencer, do any of those plans, is that?
She did. She, these are-
So, so why do we need more money for more plans for them?
We basically need to, this takes care of the back portion of the kennels, where we want to remodel the kennels. In addition to that, we need to do a little bit of electrical work, and there's a couple of the front part of the old shelter needs to remodel as well. We just need to do a little more work to these plans, so we can get through the plan check for the overall project. But these are, you know, tremendous effort and get us far along to what we need to do as far as plans.
Who are you going to go with? Are there any questions, if not?
I can vote with this more, you saw them last week, I believe.
Yeah. Well, this is just an information, received information item. Any other question? Well, thank you, Eileen, for your contribution to what the plans and, yeah.
Sure, just from a fiscal side note, we share the shelter, of course, as the board knows, and it's high time that we revise and renegotiate our agreement with the city in that regard, and so we're working on that as we speak. There will be participation, hopefully, in some of the talks.
Okay. So this will be coming back up shortly for action?
It'll be included in the budget.
It's included in your budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks. All righty, move on to item H7, the county fair.
Mr. Walcott left, and he's not back, but I think I can win this one. The quarter horse show, the annual quarter horse show that's held at the fair typically in July was moved up to June. This year, it'll be held this month. And because of that, there will be expenses and revenue associated with that show that come in this fiscal year. $28,000 in revenue, $25,000 expenses, and so in order to accommodate that, we need an increased appropriation for the 1314 budget year, and that's what this request is for.
So basically, what you're saying, just the timing of this is just changing in the budget years?
Correct, because there will be two quarter horse shows in this fiscal year, one last July and one this June.
It was held last weekend.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry. Okay. Thanks. The 4H horse show was held this last weekend. I think this is coming.
This is the regular one was held last weekend. 4H is coming.
Maybe it was done in conjunction.
I just know that I, because I mean, he hasn't been announcing at the quarter horse show, he was tied up. Bob, do you have a question?
No, I'm big motion.
Is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, so move in second, and all who's in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye.
Do we require a court case motion?
It does require a court-
I think the public should pull a court case.
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Payer?
Aye.
Supervisor Wallace?
Aye.
Yeah, the agenda shows it on the next page. Okay, item H8.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is kind of a lot to throw at you before lunchtime, but the Board of Supervisors and discussions in my hiring and assuming the administrative office duties, we discussed some reorganization of the department, so that we could better accomplish the goals of the board. And to that end, I put together these recommendations. I am asking to delete the administrative assistant changes at this time. We're internally- Well, the administrative assistant to executive secretary, so that, that issue. But I would like to deal with the issue of the personnel staff and the deputy county administrative officer position that I'm proposing. That would be the new, the new position. I envision a couple of things with the personnel division staff. Currently, we've been without a personnel director since 2010, operating that function directly through the CAO, with some of the staff in the personnel division assuming a lot of different roles. I'd like to continue that strategy, but with giving additional responsibilities to the personnel staff and changing the classification to a personnel analyst work, and the main gist of that would be to assist in a lot of the routine personnel actions, payroll action forums, performance evaluations, that sort of thing. I'd like to increase our ability to monitor and provide beneficial input on performance evaluations for the entire county. I think that's an area we're a little bit lacking in right now. And that typically manifests itself when we have an adverse personnel action on an employee, and we find that we don't have very good documentation of performance in the past. And also to maintain clear records of who's up for evaluation, who's done, who's behind, and monitor that. I'd like to continue with the offsite consultation we have with Mr. Hague that we've had since 2010. He's been a very valuable asset in helping the currently safety coordinator, who I'm recommending that we reclassify the personnel analyst. That, maybe I'll go through the deputy and then address questions after that. In the administrative division, it's been, become quite apparent that the board would like the administrative offices to have more capacity to take on special projects, whether that be building projects or analytical projects, et cetera, and be more able to dig into the details of a lot of various activities that we're, that we're engaging in. One thing that I did not put in the memo, but that is important and I want to address is, is economic development, and I think the board has expressed a desire to, to put more effort, I guess efforts is the correct word, or analysis into that function of the county, and see if we can have more impact with less liability in that area. That's something that wholeheartedly support, and depending on the candidate that would be successful in this position, we may even entertain the idea of bringing economic development out of the planning and building function into the CAO's office, because that's often where those contacts are made. And so that, if you look in the job description, that's very clearly defined. And also to generally just assist in analyzing all the departments of the county, and hopefully make it more efficient in terms of space needs, staffing levels, and budget. So, those are my recommendations. I'd be happy to go into a lot of level of detail. I included the current job descriptions as well as the new ones in your packet. And with that, I would like to entertain questions and discussion.
So, how does Julie fit into this? What is her official?
Julie's classification is assistant to the CAO, with emphasis on the information technology. She acts as the contract manager for our information technology contract, superintendent of schools, and as supervisor, and quasi-supervisor to the two IT staff of the county employees. Also, obviously, the budget is and will continue to be Julie's main function, as well as implementation and development of the purchasing policy.
So her class, she stays the same?
Correct.
So are any duties getting taken up from her that these others?
No, not initially, at least.
And so how would, would you fly this, would you get in-house, or a combination or whatever, I mean, you would just-
I envisioned an open recruitment.
And then where would they be?
Physically located. We, we're in Jim's office, but I haven't talked to him about that yet.
They get downed, kind of.
We'll-
Doing 50 years of staff.
We'll, we have, that's an issue we need to deal with. We have a very large supply closet that in the past has been used as an office, or, you know, at least immediately, and then if we end up moving supervisors down to the other level with this space needs analysis, then that would open up maybe one of the supervisor offices.
Any other questions?
I appreciate Mr. Egan bringing this forward. One of the concerns and technical criticisms of previous administrations is that we seem to do a lot of discussing about what needs to be done, but we're new about getting things done. And in the past, and it goes back to even when Mr. Kennelson was here, you know, you get the board all fired up and onboard and taking action, and then it sits there for, like, months with nothing in terms of follow-through, and oftentimes, the administrative office has to rely on bar of staff in other departments. And the problem is, is that the department heads and those offices have their stuff that they are struggling to get done, and when the CAO bar of that staff just minimizes, you know, we lose on full fronts, because you just, the output is just not adequate. And to expect one person to be able to pull all the others simultaneously is not something that I think is realistic. So that has been, I think, a weakness in organizational structure. A good example, across the street at the city, when Mr. Hancock, who is the new city administrator, one of the, one of the first things he did, and I know he's probably was criticized for doing what he did, in terms of actually beefing up, he's got a program manager, he's got some staff immediately adjacent to him and his function, and I would say, just in the last few months, last year or so, that he is, you know, handling their affairs, he's been able to accomplish far more in terms of capacity output than any previous administrator has. So I think it's a clear indication that if we really want to get something done, that we need to be able to have the resources to. I think beyond that, I think Mr. Egan, in my discussions at least with him over the last several months, is that he needs to look at some of those key departments. I mean, we have public works, and I think they're all gone now, but I mean, Pete is in here. We really rely on one primary person working under Mr. Malara as the assistant public works director, in terms of following through, and I would say it's totally phenomenal, the amount of stuff that he has been able to get accomplished, but I think we have a long list of things that need to be done, and you just can't have these bottlenecks in the organizational structure. So how we can beef up the capacity in those areas, I think are really important. So I think that, you know, that this would give a chance, you know, for multiple layers or levels of being able to accomplish the output that needs to be there, and hopefully he can find the right person to fill that particular slot, that can work independently, but yet, you know, compatibly with various departments and with Mr. Egan, in terms of advancing, you know, the policy directions that we have. I mean, if you really look at local government, where the most embarrassing aspects of the last, you know, 25 years, you know, like the school district, you know, the two boards agreed and they- agreed, and they decided to do this, even exchanged money and stuff, that somebody failed to file the final document in terms of recording the transaction. I mean, LAFCO, you know, failed to file some paperwork with border equalization back in the late 1970s, and there's-